Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Commission Meeting for the City of Muskegon, November 10th, 2014. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome up Wally Harrison of Ecclesia Church to lead us in prayer, and we will follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. If you'll pray with me. Father God, thank you for the gift of this day. Thank you for these folks in the room who are passionate about the city of Muskegon, for its flourishing, for its restoration. So, God, I just pray that everything that takes place this evening bring honor and glory to you, and may be it done in an honoring way. We're grateful for this day again, God. We pray all of this in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harrison. May we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Here.
Commissioner German, absent. Commissioner Rinse Masipiga.
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Galrin.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Thank you. Chief, I believe we have some recognition this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's that time again. We just graduated our 2014 Citizen Police Academy graduates, and this fall, we had 15 that completed our 10-week course. And we're going to recognize them tonight. But over the last 10 weeks, they've spent, you know, each Wednesday evening, several hours learning about dispatch, the jail, investigations, police patrol, all the specialties that law enforcement participates in, and all the things it takes to make that happen, from the inception of the call, all the way through to the investigation, and then finally, like I said, the visit of the jail. And one thing that our graduates go through is at the very end, and they've graduated, they'll all be doing a ride-along at the Muskegon Police Department, which for some of them is a highlight. It just depends on who they are. But anyways, tonight, I'd like to call, you know, everyone from their class, why don't you come up here and stand in the middle? Then we'll have the mayor come down, and we'll read the proclamation. But like I said, you know, we do this twice a year, and we're so happy when the citizens participate in this program. It gives them an idea of what law enforcement is all about in their city and in the region. We're doing the Spring 2015 Academy, so tell your friends, family, neighbors about that. We'll read the proclamation. We're going to shake your hand. The mayor's going to talk for a second. Also, you know, your academy coordinator's going to also talk. So, I'm going to give the microphone to Denny.
I just want to speak real, very quickly. I just want to say what a pleasure it was. You guys were a great class, and I hope you're out there encouraging other people to take it. Like we tell you during the class, nothing we teach you there is secret. The whole point is to get good information out to the public. So, anybody out there who's interested, we do it twice a year. It's a 10-week thing. You commit to one night every week, on a Wednesday night, and it runs you through the entire legal system, from 911 call, central dispatch, all the way through prosecution and what happens after that, and the many facets in between. So, I encourage anybody, but it's been a pleasure being your host. And what you're going to actually hear your names read here by the mayor. We're going to let the mayor read the proclamation. When we get all done, we'll actually come out and hand you a copy of that. Okay?
Thank you, Denny. Thank you, Chief. I saw Tom here, and I was wondering what you were doing here. I didn't know if we had the building up for sale.
I didn't know.
Not yet, anyway, so.
It's an open road.
Oh, very good. Very good. But thank you all for participating and engaging the police department and the city in this, you know, initiative. I just, I can't tell you how pleased I am that you've taken so much of your time to come on into the people's house and pick up some really good information. Now, please take that back out to your fellow citizens and share it with them, and shine a light on the realities and the good work that we attempt, day in and day out, to do on behalf of our citizens. A resolution of recognition of the Fall 2014 Citizens' Academy graduates. Whereas the City Commission desires to provide citizens with a better understanding of the functions of law enforcement, dispelling misconceptions, and increasing positive communication between citizens and police, and whereas it is the desire of the Muskegon City Commission to encourage cooperation between the public and law enforcement to positively impact our communities, now therefore be it resolved that the Muskegon City Commission hereby congratulates and recognizes Carolyn Archer, Betty Cheeks, Donald Cheeks. That's a match set. Well, that's good. Lisa Dodd, Renee Dudek, Jaclyn Hodges, Tanine Jackson, Delana Jackson, Patrick Mitchell, Bonnie Orr, Jacob Rose, Thomas Sanaki, Larry Taylor, Michael Workman, and Jeffrey Wright. And we recognize them for their faithful attendance, completion, and graduation from the 10-week Fall 2014 Citizens' Police Academy. This is given to you on behalf of the Muskegon City Commission this 10th day of November 2014. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Thank you. (applause) I hope that didn't happen. I hope that didn't happen. (laughter) Appreciate it. Pleasure. Thank you very much. Thank you. Certainly appreciate it. Thank you. That was a good time. That was great. Okay, great. Very good. Thanks for listening. You appreciate it. (applause) Again, thank you, folks. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk's summary request to approve minutes of the October 28th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Moratorium on fees for 2015 vacant buildings, planning, and economic development, summary request. Request to approve a moratorium on fees charged to owners of vacant buildings that are entering their seventh-year billing cycle in 2015. Eligibility requirements for the moratorium of fees charged are proposed to remain the same as 2014. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends approval of a fee moratorium for vacant building invoices meeting the approved criteria. Approval of the Housing Development Grant Agreement for Target Market Analysis, Community and Neighborhood Services, summary request. The cities of Muskegon, Norton Shores, Muskegon Heights, along with the Coney of Muskegon, are interested in pursuing a target market analysis study to forecast our future housing needs. This will enable each city to have a tool for investors and developers, and may lead to future investment. The agreement is with mischa for a match up to $15,000 for this study. Staff recommendation: To approve and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the documents for the analysis study. MetroPCS First Amendment to the Tower Lease Agreement, Public Works, summary request. Approve the staff-negotiated amendment to the contract with MetroPCS for tenant equipment upgrades to NIMs Street Water Tower, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign said amendment. MetroPCS Michigan Incorporated, Delaware Limited Liability Company, and the Department of Public Works have been in negotiations to amend the 2009 lease agreement for the NIMs Street Water Tower. The First Amendment would allow MetroPCS to change the type of antennas and perform other upgrades to its equipment, but will not increase the number of antennas currently installed on the tank. Staff recommendation: To approve this First Amendment to the 2009 lease agreement and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. New Singular Wireless Fourth Amended Tower Lease Agreement, Public Works, summary request. Approve the staff-negotiated amendment to the contract with New Singular Wireless to add three more antennas to the Marshall Street Water Tower, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign said amendment. New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, Delaware Corporation, and the Department of Public Works have been in negotiations to amend the Third Amendment to the 1998 lease agreement for the NIMs Street and Marshall Street Water Tower. This Fourth Amendment would allow New Singular Wireless to install on Marshall Street Water Tower only, up to a total of 12 antennas, three additional antennas from the current number of nine. Staff recommendation: To approve the Fourth Amendment to the 1998 lease agreement and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. City Legal Services Contract, City Manager, summary request. The contract with Parmenter O'Toole expires December 31st of 2014. We are requesting approval for a six-month extension so that the legal services contract could correspond with the city's fiscal year. Staff recommendation: Approval of the six-month extension. Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement, City Manager, summary request. This is a request to delete Paragraph 3B Retirement Deferred Compensation Proposal of the current employment agreement, and amend Paragraph 2 salary to add the current deferred compensation into the current salary. Staff recommendation: Approval.
Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Vice Mayor?
Seeing none, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
For? It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion, Vice Mayor? As the first, you know, I give you.
No.
Okay. You're the second. Do you have anything?
Nothing.
Anybody else? Just want, anybody wants to jump in? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinse Masipiga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Galrin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, please. Item A.
Transmittal of the June 30th, 2014 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, Finance, summary request. The city's June 30th, 2014 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFER, has previously been distributed to city commissioners via email and hard copy. The CAFER is also available on the city's website at www.shorlinecity.com. The CAFER includes the annual independent auditor's report as required by state law. At this time, the CAFER is being formally transmitted to the City Commission. The CAFER has been prepared in accordance with all current Governmental Accounting Standards Board GASBY announcements, and also includes a single audit of federal grants received by the city. Staff recommendation: Acceptance of the June 30th, 2014 CAFER, and authorization for staff to transmit the CAFER to appropriate federal, state, and private agencies.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we accept the June 30th, 2014 CAFER, and, which is our audit, and authorization for staff to transmit the CAFER to appropriate federal, state, and private agencies. And good evening, finance directors.
Good evenings, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight is the formal transmittal of the June 30th, 2014 CAFER to the commission and the citizens. And this evening, we have with us, from the city's audit firm, who conducted the independent audit of the city's financial statements, from the firm of Brickley Delong, Tim Arter and Eric Van Dopp. And I believe Eric will give us a brief overview of the June 30th, 2014 CAFER.
Very good. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Does this come with pictures?
Sadly, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What type of pictures would you like to see? Okay, okay. There you go. Front cover. Nice picture of the clock tower, so. All right. I think everybody's got a copy up there. I'll keep this brief. You've got your stuff in front of you. We're just going to look at some highlights, and then if anybody's got any questions, we'll answer them, and I'll get out of your way, and you guys can proceed with business. Please feel free to interrupt at any time if you do have questions. Just to walk you briefly through the front part of the financial statements, starting on page five is the transmittal letter. This is an overview of the city, not from like a financial standpoint, but just an overview of the city, as written by Derek and Frank. And it's just kind of a nice summary of what's going on in the city, and economic initiatives, and economy, and all that kind of stuff. That's a required part of the CAFER. Behind that, on page 17, if you want to go there, is where the, kind of the formal part of the audit starts. And this is our independent auditor's report. This thing keeps growing. It's up to three pages now. We keep having to put more and more stuff in here to keep up with the standards. But the key paragraph is at the top of the second page, on page 18, which is the opinion paragraph appropriately. It says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the aggregate discreetly presented component units, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city of Muskegon, Michigan, as of June 30, 2014, and the respective changes in financial position, and where applicable cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." And that's a long sentence, but the key parts are, "present fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles." An auditor jargon, we call this an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion we can give, and the opinion that the city has traditionally received. Basically, as a result of our procedures and testing, we're not aware of there needing to be any material adjustments to your financial statements, is what we're saying. So, having said that, we'll just keep moving on here. Page 20 is the management discussion and analysis. This is a really nice part of the financial statements. This was added as a requirement to financial statements, probably going on 10 years now it's been in here. But this is as written by the city, by Derek. The financial statements tell you what happened. The CAFER is kind of like, even if you look at public financial statements, there's always that letter up in the front for management that talks about, you know, why things happen, and what, you know, what future plans are, and explanations of budget differences, and comparisons to last year. And that's really what this is. So, it's kind of a nice place to go to get a little bit more information on what's going on. And it's also a nice spot to go, just if you want to look at, boil this hundred-and-some-page document down to under 10 pages, that's a really great spot to go to. So, just wanted to note that was there. But let's take a look at some numbers. If you want to go to the general fund on page 38. I would note, the general fund is broken out in a great deal of detail behind the footnotes back on '72. We're not going to go back there, but this is kind of the summarized version. If you want to go department by department, line by line, there's a lot more detail in the back, but for the sake of tonight, we'll keep it summarized. The general fund there is in the left column, and starting at the first subtotal there, total revenues for the year of $23,960,758. That's up about $553,000 from last year. Just to talk about where some of the changes came from, the first line there, taxes, $14.9 million. That includes both income and property taxes. Income taxes were up about $325,000, and property taxes were down about $202,000. So, overall, you had an increase there of about $123,000. So, income taxes have been doing pretty well the last few years. Property taxes, hopefully, will have bottomed out and hopefully start coming back one of these days. But at least the really big decreases that have happened in the past seem to have slowed down. Licenses and permits on the next line of $1,570,000 are up quite a bit this year, about $332,000. Additional building activity in the city with the jail and some hospital things and other, along those lines. So, that brought in some additional fees. Federal revenues are down about $34,000. State revenues, more good news here. That's almost entirely state revenue sharing. There's a few other little things in there. That's $3.8 million. That's up about $113,000, and that's the second or third year now revenue sharing's gone up after close to 10 years of going down. So, that's good news as well. Local revenue, that's just money coming from the Tifa for the Elsie Walker Arena, and that's the same as last year. Charges for services, $2,219,000. That's down about $155,000, and that's a lot of that just has to do with indirect cost charges to other funds being adjusted a little bit. Fines and forfeitures of $402,000 are down about $8,000. And interest and rental income of $290,000 is up about $104,000. The city had taken a little bit of a hit, some bonds and some other items the last couple of years, but things bounced back a little bit this year. And then other revenue, $561,000 is up about $79,000. So, as I said, you're up about $553,000 in revenue. Total expenses of $23,53,208. That's up about $1.1 million from last year. Just a quick run-through here, representation services of $1,031,000, $1,032,000 there. That's up about $140,000 with some additional legal expenditures, and the city manager search and transition included in there. Administrative services are down about $11,000. Financial services are almost exactly what they were last year. Public safety of $12,987,000 is up about $401,000. Fire department went up a little bit. Inspections went up a little bit, and there's a new Department of Justice JAG grant in there as well. But that's $12.9 million, such a big number to begin with. $400,000 isn't actually, is not actually that big an increase as a percentage. Public works, $2.9 million, is up about $40,000. Community and economic development of $1,171,000 is up about $170,000. Culture and recreation, which is your parks and similar items, of $1,308, is up about $107,000. And then other governmental functions of $643,000 there is up about $344,000, and that increase is primarily due to that additional payment to MERS that was approved during the year, so that came out of there. Debt service is about the same as last year, and then capital outlays, just $20,980 in the general fund this year. That's down a little bit. So, that leaves you with excess of revenues over expenditures of $907,550. Last year, it was about $1.4 million, so that's not quite as high as last year, but it's still a good number. And then you've got your other financing sources, which are your transfers in, transfers out to other funds. Little bit of transfers in from the, from some minor little things. The bulk of it, that transfers out, is $768,000, which is primarily transfers to the street funds for various street improvements and other, other street fund needs. So, overall, your fund balance is an increase of $142,539,000, and ending fund balance of $7,496,097. So, good year for the general fund. I would note, too, just if you're comparing this to what you see on your internal financial statements, the city internally has a separate budget stabilization fund, but that fund has to get rolled into the general fund in the financial statements. So, this fund balance, I think your budget stabilization fund's got about $1.7 million in it, so you would need to back that off to kind of tie to what you're used to looking at for your internal documents. As a percentage, your unassigned fund balance in the general fund is supposed to be equal, your floor is supposed to be 13%, and you're at about 23.5% this year. So, you built a little bit of a cushion in there, and I know there are, you know, some big things coming up in the next couple of years that you're going to have to address, and you able to put a few bucks in the bank to deal with those items. So, that's good news. All right. Just take a brief look at the sewer and water funds. Those are back a couple pages, on page 41, if you want to just flip over there a second. Sewer funds in the left column. I'm just going to go right down to the bottom there, change in net position, third line from the bottom there. Sewer fund had a decrease of $760,650, leaving ending net position of $16,424,425,000. I would note that the sewer fund and water fund also are, again, I love using accounting jargon, but full accrual funds as opposed to modified accrual, which you see in the general fund. The general fund only shows current activity, doesn't have the debt and fixed assets. Sewer and water fund do. So, that's $16.4 million, includes all your infrastructure, fixed assets, and related debt. Actually, the sewer fund doesn't have any debt currently. But that's not all spendable cash. If you're looking across on page 40, on the other side, on the bottom there, bottom-left net position sewer fund, you can see it's split into a couple of categories. And the unrestricted number there gives you a better idea of the available resources in the sewer fund, and that is at $3,869,000. So, and that, the unrestricted is down from $4,584,000, so that's down pretty close to what your change in net position was. The sewer fund is just a case of, you know, keeping an eye on your wholesale costs. The county's had some increases over the last few years, and that impacts this fund. So, just keep an eye on this fund. It does have some, some good reserves, but obviously, you don't like to see losses in the bottom on utility funds. The water fund in the next column, increase in net position of $121,972,000, ending net position of $28,818,000. Again, you look over on the left page there, of that $28 million, about $2,953,000's unrestricted, and that's up from about $2.3 million in the previous year. So, unrestricted's growing a little bit in the water fund. So, water fund's doing all right, and obviously, you'll have some major changes coming as you've got other communities becoming wholesale users in the coming year. So, I would expect that in the next couple of years, you'll see some really big changes in this fund. And just since we're looking here, the Marina Fund had a loss of $65,000, ending net position of $1,859,000, and unrestricted is about $314,000. So, that's the Marina Fund. Any questions on anything I've talked about so far? All right. Just touch on a couple of tables quick. Page 78's an interesting table. This is your pension and retiree healthcare information, if you go back there. Continues to be pretty good news for the city. The top table is your MERS schedule of funding progress. MERS issues an annual report for you guys every year that shows the actuarial value of your assets, and the accrued liability, your actuarial liabilities, and your unfunded amount, and your funded ratio. And the city's been paying its full amount, and even put a little extra in, as I noted earlier. Although I should also point out, these are on a calendar year, so that says of 12/31/13. It doesn't reflect activity from the second half of the year. But the city's funded ratio did go down a little bit, and that's just a reflection of the actuaries. They're really good at smoothing things out and trying to make, prevent payments from, you know, having big dips and spikes, and they're always averaging out losses and gains, and changes in assumptions, and all that stuff over years. And for right now, based on some of those adjustments, the last couple of years, your funded ratio's gone down a little bit, but 91% is very good. A lot of entities and other communities are, you know, you see in the 70%, or sometimes even the 60%. And that's just a reflection of your previous to MERS. You had your own plans, and when you converted to MERS, you were basically fully funded. So, you came into the MERS system very healthy, and that's why you've been able to keep your funded ratio up there. Declining funded ratio generally means, though, is that if that's ticking down a little bit over time, is the actuaries will gradually smooth that out, and more than likely, you'll see increases in required contributions over the next few years. The good news on the bottom there is your schedule of funding progress for your other post-employment benefits plan. That is your retiree healthcare plan. You only have an evaluation done on this every two years, so this is the 12/31/13's the first valuation you've had done in a couple of years. And between funding, and some changes in benefits, and new employees, and all that, and how you handle new employees, your funded ratio on your other post-employment benefits is at 87%, and that's really good. The whole idea of pre-funding retiree healthcare has really only come into consideration for governmental entities in the last six, seven years. So, this is kind of a new idea. The city'd actually been pre-funding its retiree healthcare, I think, since the late 1980s, so you were able to jump in with a pretty high-funded percentage, and have been able to build on that since then. So, 87% is really something to be proud of, and something you don't have to worry about as much as, as maybe some other people do. So, good job there. Any questions on this one? All right. I would note, and I'm not going to go through it in any great detail, but the back part of the CAFER is your federal, is your single audit, which was mentioned briefly in the introduction, but you're required to have a federal compliance audit. I mean, this is the numbers audit. If you spend over $500,000, you're also required to have a compliance audit for the federal government. So, we have to do compliance testing on all that other fun stuff that's really more related to doing things the right way, not so much the numbers. But we did all that, and we didn't find anything that was worth reporting as compliance issues to the federal government. And I would go a step further from that. We don't have anything at all this year as far as formal recommendations that have gone in the report. So, there's no recommendations. I always like to point that out, because you don't know they're not there if I tell you they're not there. So, that's good as well. Before, I guess I wrap up, final chance for any questions. Mr. Vice Mayor, you've always got one for me.
I was just very pleased with how the numbers came in, so.
Yes, you guys had a good year. All right. Well, I'd certainly like to wrap it up by thanking the commission for having us come out here, and look forward to seeing you again next year, and certainly, a big thanks to your staff as well, Derek and Beth, and others in the finance department. And I always thank the finance department, but honestly, you know, we bug planning, community and neighborhood services, and engineering upstairs a lot as well, and they put a lot of time into this as well. And, you know, we bug Mohammed a lot this year, so big thanks to Mohammed. He didn't think I was going to do it, but I'm going to call him out, so. But certainly, thanks to Derek and Beth in finance. fun stuff that's really more related to doing things the right way, not so much the numbers. But we did all that, and we didn't find anything that was worth reporting as compliance issues to the federal government. And I would go a step further from that. We don't have anything at all this year as far as formal recommendations that have gone in the report. So there's no recommendations. I always like to point that out, 'cause you don't know they're not there if I tell, tell you they're not there. So that's good as well. Before, I guess I wrap up, final chance for any questions. Mr. Vice Mayor, you've always got one for me.
I was just very pleased with how the numbers came in, so.
Yes, you guys had a good year. All right. Well, I'd certainly like to wrap it up by thanking the commission for having us come out here, and look forward to seeing you again next year, and certainly a big thanks to your staff as well, Derek and Beth and others in the finance department. And I always thank the finance department, but honestly, you know, we bug planning, community, neighborhood services and engineering upstairs a lot as well, and they put a lot of time into this as well. And, you know, we bug Mohammed a lot this year, so big thanks to Mohammed. He didn't think I was gonna do it, but I'm gonna call him out, so. But certainly thanks to Derek and Beth and finance and everybody else throughout the city, and you got a good crew working here. So we'll see you again later. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Derek, finance staff, to all our departments and divisions, all of our administration, thank you very much. It's always good to have, you know, this in front of us as we anticipate the next twelve triple-E shoe to drop. But thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you. Commissioners, any further?
Just one comment. Obviously, I echo the, the statements that have been made. Having been on the commission, it, you almost take for granted the quality of work that the staff have done over the years, and we should. We have excellent people. With turnover, we've had new people come in who are doing as good or better than their predecessors, and their predecessors were doing pretty darn good. So not every organization or municipality is, is as fortunate to have as good a quality of people running their community as we have here in Muskegon. I just also wanted to, you know, not so much we're up here, we're all aware of what's coming, but just for the folks who heard those numbers and say, "Gosh, it looks like they have some cash there," you know, that, that's what we've been socking away to get through B.C. Cobb transition. And, you know, it's not like that's something that's available for us, because if we spend it today, as we go through that transition period over the next two, three years, we won't have anything to make that a smooth transition. So, you know, for anybody out there who's thinking, "While those numbers seem awfully high," there's a reason. We're planning ahead. We've been planning ahead for a long time, knowing that a power plant that's designed to last for fifty years probably isn't gonna make it too much past sixty-five. And that's about, I think sixty-five or sixty-six will be how old it is when they finally shut down. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? Okay. Hey, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Ritzelba Sibiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Once again, thank you, gentlemen. Page and B, please.
Commission election date, city clerk summary request. At the September work session meeting, the city commission was given the option to move city commission elections to even years based on the percentage of voter turnout. Commission asks, "Does this be placed on the November agenda for discussion?"
Well, here we are for discussion. Anybody wanna lead out on this? Commissioner Johnson?
Sure, I'll take the lead, 'cause this is something that I had asked, that we pushed back a couple months so that we'd had accurate time to consult with residents and get input from our citizens on this. And it's something that I have talked with the many neighborhood associations as I've gone to them over the past couple of months, and, well, one association, you know, leans forward, and other associations, you know, completely against it, and other associations kind of in the middle. And so I didn't see strong support for making this change at this time. It's something that I think we could continue to pursue perhaps at a later time. It's something that we may want to bring as an advisory vote to the citizens on a future ballot. I, I think at this time, it may be, may not be prudent to make this change at this time and go forward with our elections next year, leaving us open with the possibility of adding a modified millage request on next year's ballot. I think it would be imprudent to make the election change but still pursue a millage request next year. So that, those are my comments for right now. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, or Vice Mayor. Commissioner Turnquist?
So I understand.
I was switching though.
The four-at-large positions, their office would be extended by one year. Is that correct?
Everybody.
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 Everybody, the, or the wards?
No, everyone.
Everybody, one year?
Yes.
And then the elections would be in, in even-numbered years when there's either a governorship or a presidential?
Correct.
And it would cost us, or save us around thirty-five thousand dollars in your estimation?
Correct.
I just, you know, I wanna go with the public and what they say, but if we were starting from scratch and doing this, we would probably say, "Let's, let's make that our mode of operation." Doing it and changing it maybe has an adverse reaction. I don't know. I have not had any adverse reaction to it. I do know of one former member of the commission that was gonna speak to us on that, and he was against it a couple of meetings ago. But I think, I can go either way. If, if bringing it to, what are you suggesting, bring it to a vote of, of the public?
An advisory ballot question, yeah. So they can, so the citizens can weigh in. 'Cause even amongst supporters of it, I've heard reservations about the city commissioners automatically extending our term by a year. So I figured if we did a, an advisory ballot question, citizens would have greater buy-in. They'd, they'd feel like it's a transparent process, and they'd be able to buy in as to whether or not they wanna see that change happen, and they'd go into an understanding that it would extend all the commissioners' terms by one year.
Commissioner Ritzelba Sibiga?
Yeah, I think one other aspect is, you know, the increase in voter turnout. The savings is one thing. I kind of, I know that people have said they want more participation in elections. This would be the simplest way to increase the turnout, because, I mean, I think it, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that turnout in odd years is difficult. It's difficult to convince people to come out. And I understand that we have some focus on local issues because of that, but in the end of the day, less people vote on those, in those years. I don't, I don't, I think that there is an issue with, you know, extending commissioners' own terms, sitting commissioners doing that. I'm not sure how to weigh all of that. Maybe an advisory vote that would propose a time to do it. Of course, this would all be, you know, depend on who gets elected at certain times, and those commissioners may not pursue what the advisory vote dictates, but maybe that way we could get the public to buy in to the fact that it's not just current commissioners trying to extend their terms. But to me, the, the voter turnout is an important issue, because I think we want, we constantly say, we try to get people to vote, but we know the simplest way to do that would be to make this change.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Well, a lot of people don't realize the reason that municipal elections are on odd years instead of on the congressional cycle is that around a hundred years or so ago, they moved them as a reform tool, because at the time, many cities were controlled by party machine operations, and the thought was by decoupling municipal elections from the national and state party machines that you would actually have cleaner elections and cleaner municipal administrations. I don't know if it turned out the way they hoped, but that's why they did it. Here in two thousand fourteen, I don't know if that's really much of an issue to be concerned about. And so when this was brought forward by the clerk, I was looking at this in terms of saving money, which is a significant issue. I mean, we've asked the voters for additional taxes to be levied to pay for streets, and if we have ways we can save money, I think it's, it's prudent for us to look at that and, and make those necessary savings where it makes sense. I think there is a strong argument to be made regarding voter turnout. To me, the only countervailing argument, and I think there's some legitimacy to it, is that with the length of the ballot and the noise, and certainly we're all very well aware of all the noise politically over the last eighteen months, that do important local issues get lost in that. Because obviously at this level, there's absolutely no reasonable way anybody in a city our size is gonna be spending the kind of money to cut through that noise in a political campaign. But I think that, you know, there's merits there for intelligent discussion. I don't know why, but somehow this became portrayed as some sort of sinister move, that there's something nefarious afoot, that people are trying to avoid being accountable to the voters, and so on. And I think that really does a disservice to the people up here. All of us, all seven of us, have put ourselves out there to be evaluated by our neighbors and our constituents, and do our best to represent what's in the best interest of the city when we're making decisions. And so I, I really think that really took this in a direction that has not really been very positive as far as having a, a good discussion. The other thing is, is that, and I'll just be blunt, we're paid to take the tough decisions. And I use that as a metaphorically, since obviously, other than stipend to cover expenses, it's not like we're getting paychecks. But that's what we run for. We're not a town hall system. We don't operate on plebiscite. I think if this is a decision that we feel ought to be made, we ought to be willing to have the backbone to make it, whether it's to make a change or not. That's our responsibility. Asking for an advisory, and we've had issues where we've had advisory votes before that were of questionable legal merit, I'm not sure I'm comfortable treading down that path. And that's not to cut off anybody's voice. They have a voice every four years, where their ward commissioner, or every four years for their at-large commissioner or the mayor, where they can say, "That person's doing a good job," or they're not. Or when there's an open seat, and there often is, "I choose this person over that person to represent me for the next four years in that position." And I think that's how we're held accountable. I think that's how representative democracy's intended to work. So at this point, I'd rather just let this rest for a while. I, I see the merit of moving it. I see the merit of saving the money, but I'd rather just let this issue rest for a while. I think there's more important issues that we're gonna be facing over the next year or two than when we hold our election. And so that means, in my mind, staying with the status quo is the sensible thing to do, and let's put our political energy and our political capital and our need to make those tough choices on things are gonna have a much more important impact on this community over the long haul than whether we all have our terms extended one year or not. So that's my two cents, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Anybody else have two cents? Commissioner Hood?
I, I'm kinda in, in the middle on this, but I do agree with what Vice Mayor Spataro had said, that if the decision has to be made, then that's what we're here to do, is to make those decisions. So that's what I feel.
Okay. In many ways, it sounds that people are still grinding this out in their, in their minds, and support or wondering is, you know, tepid at best, so.
I just, I would rather strongly support it, so. And I'm not sure at what point that we need to just, you know, it affects next year's election, so what the timetable is or something to revisit it, but I guess, you know, I, I'm not making a motion, but I do, I do want to convey that I, I do think that the most important point is voter turnout. I would like to see it increased.
I think it's a tough decision for any of us, because we're sitting here. If we were a neutral board, how would we do it? But in the long haul, it's, I think it's a good thing for the city, the voter turnout and the savings.
You're strong. You would support it.
I would support it.
Just to touch on voter turnout, it's interesting when you look at turnout in a presidential year versus a gubernatorial year. We had only thirty percent just this last week, and we look at closer to a majority, if not surpassing majority in a presidential year. And if this change happens, what we have is the ward commissioners getting elected in a presidential year and all our at-large positions getting elected in a gubernatorial lower turnout year. If we were to make this change in even years, I know this would be much more difficult, but if we were to make this change in even years, I would much rather see all the at-large positions getting elected than we have the highest turnout in our elections. But I know that that's much more difficult to accomplish, given the way the elections are currently staggered. But as we currently have it with, with our off-year elections, we have roughly the same turnout in both our at-large and our ward commission elections. But we need better turnout across the board no matter the election. Last week was pretty dreadful for our city and really across the state in terms of turnout, and that's something that we all, everyone up here and citizens as well, you know, make sure you're bringing your family, your friends, your neighbors to the polls with you.
And I, and I think ultimately that, that sets with the electorate. They're the ones that have to beat tracks to the voting booth. They have to take the opportunity to exercise that suffrage and take on their obligation, you know? So it's, we can beg, but people have to engage. I, I would, I would support it. I know what the trend is and why, you know, statewide. Cost and participation. And many agencies besides municipalities, you know, including, you know, library districts, school districts, are heading in this direction for, you know, the same facts that we're looking, you know, at. And, and I, and I take your point, Vice Mayor. You know, we have to make the decision based on the practicalities and rational decisions, and we have to push back on those contentions that we're doing it because we're self-serving. We're doing it because if we would move in that direction, any agency's doing that in order to, you know, foster more participation, to put themselves in a position where there is more participation from the electorate, and to save those dollars, those tax dollars, those hard-won dollars that each and every one of us, you know, brings forward from our paychecks, so that, you know, maybe can be used, well, they can be used in a, in a, in a better, in a better way in our city services. I know one thing that I think that I would miss, that there, there rather is an intimacy to the, the local elections. But how intimate can you get with, I mean, what, what, what is the trade-off? You know, that intimacy and twelve percent participation as opposed to, you know, fifty or forty-eight, you know? It's, but I, but I think from, from the aspect of diminishing resources and sadly, in those odd years, diminishing participation, that, that, it makes a lot of sense. And, yeah, we, we do get paid the big bucks to make that decision in representative government. So, you know, I, I, I would support, you know, going, going forward. Commissioner?
I, I just wanted to comment about the, our responsibility to make the tough decisions, and I completely agree. That's what we're elected to do, and that's why we're here. I think on a matter of electoral form, particularly deciding when the citizens could decide who represents them, I think it is important to have their input. And that's why I've been seeking it out over the past couple of months and
Oh, yes.
Have not, and as, as others on this board have been seeking it out, and I think we've all realized that there's not strong support, a little overwhelming support to make this change. And that's why I think it's a good idea to have an advisory ballot question, so that the citizens, as Vice Mayor pointed out, many people, this has become controversial for many people, where some people have sinister views about or believe that these are sinister machinations happening at City Hall with regard to this change and the extension of the terms for every commissioner by a year. So I, I think if we were to make this change, I think it's really important to get the public to weigh in on this question, and so that they feel that it's been a completely transparent process and a process in which they are able to directly participate in deciding when city elections happen. And
And while I, while I appreciate that, I, I think we do have to be careful due to the fact And while I appreciate that, I think we do have to be careful due to the fact that how far out do we extend advisory votes and then what matters? You can get to the point where you've got to have an advisory vote to, you know, adopt a budget. And I'm not saying that it would go that direction, but it potentially could. I'm just thinking, you know, James Madison, you know, being careful of trying to govern by polls when you're in a position to have to exercise that authority, because the danger in polls is that the opinion could change the next day, you know, like the weather. And what's the expectation? You know, we govern, or when do we start parsing everything that we are doing up here to have to, you know, go to a poll? I know, I think after a while, it might get to the point of being, going to the point where you're, you know, it's not governable because you're not willing to make a decision. But I do take your point. I do see value in that. But I think we have to be careful.
When was the last advisory question that we had on the ballot?
It was supposedly an advisory ballot, but it was the sappy, and then they rescinded, no, it wasn't advisory, you're directing you. And there's a danger...
When was the last City Hall initiated advisory question?
The...
The...
A decade ago?
Which I believe, if the corporate counsel could correct me, there was quite a bit of blowback from the state on that because there were some questions as to whether or not we actually legally can hold purely advisory ballot questions.
That's correct. We got some pushback. There's attorney general opinions and some loose court appeals cases indicating we don't have that authority. The big pushback comes either from the state or the county clerk, who refuses to put it on the ballot. So, whether she would on this one, I, you know, I don't know. But that's the problem, is we have defended it and we have recognized that we're on shaky ground.
So, in lieu...
Go ahead.
I'd be willing to get asked for an opinion from our county clerk and attorney general on advisory ballot, but our advisory question, but in lieu of that, we could put a binding charter amendment on the ballot to make this election your change as well. That'd be, the alternative could not be?
Well, it wouldn't be a charter, but you could do an initiatory petition for an ordinance amendment, or adopt something and see if a referendum comes.
Yeah, this is kind of like a work session topic, and this is not a work session. I'm not sure how long we want to discuss it, but may, if we're not clear on what we want to do, maybe we should defer on this. It sounds like there's, we've kicked around quite a few of the issues and maybe gotten some feedback of where different people are, which is a typical work session activity. I'm not sure it'd be wise to really push it to a decision tonight, is my opinion.
Point well taken. Vice Mayor?
I would just concur with that, that, you know, I think we've all had some good discussion here, let's think about it. I mean, we're kind of doing this because we're doing a work session and a commission meeting on the same night because City Hall is closed tomorrow. But I would say, when we talk about transparency, this doesn't get much more transparent. This is an open meeting, published, people can be here if they choose, there are people who are watching us at home, that will be replayed, I believe, two or three times, this will be reported on in the newspaper. I'm satisfied that when we have these kind of discussions and we make these kind of decisions, even if they're controversial, even if some people find them very unpopular, it's a transparent process. So I think, you know, when we talk about those things, transparency doesn't just mean plebiscite. It can also mean an open discussion by elected officials following state law, and everybody can see and contact us, I'm in the phone book, I'm on Facebook. If people have opinions on issues before this body, people are very, very capable and have, over the years, many times, called me or written me to voice their opinion on a particular subject, and I'm sure they will continue to do that.
Is there a concurrence then to move this to a work session in the future? And I would think probably sometime into the new year, which would probably take us from missing, making a decision before the next election. But perhaps, I know January's typically pretty busy, we'll have our goal session set then. So, I would think probably no sooner than February. Commissioner?
I would concur with Commissioner Renssman-Simms and the Vice Mayor on that. I'm fine with that. May we ask the attorney to seek an opinion from the county clerk and attorney general's office on the possibility of an advisory?
No, and here's why.
Okay.
The only people that can ask for attorney general's opinions are state representatives, senators, and the governor's office. So, I can ask, I have asked, and I get a nice letter saying, it's nice, but you're not in the group that gets to ask.
So, I should consult our state representative?
Yeah, or we can do an opinion letter for you.
Thank you.
Anything that does happen after December, it doesn't affect next year at all, so we don't have to do it in February, we can wait even longer.
Okay.
It's not going to impact.
All right, then, just given the probability of lots of good stuff coming up after the first year, we do have goal setting and so, then why don't we hold it in abeyance, but look at, perhaps revisiting this in the first quarter of 2015, right?
Yes.
Very good.
Where's it go? Thank you. Commissioners? Any other business? Oh, yes. Item A.
We do have one other business item, the idea of on-street parking in the wintertime. I guess it's that time of year, again, to speak about it. I hate to put this on here, it's kind of another work session item for a meeting, but if we wait much longer, we might not have any time to implement anything if that's what we decide. I think from a staff standpoint, Mohammed's got some pictures over there he wants to show you. Last year was a tough year for us in terms of snow removal on the streets, especially as a result of cars just not being moved. You know, some streets, and I went home down Sanford a lot, and it seemed like it was turned into like a one-lane road with a parking lane that was about three cars wide, because they kept moving further and further out to the center of the road, and there was no opportunity to plow. But you get the gist from the pictures there of some of the problem areas that we had in the city. And so essentially, what we want to do is talk to you a little bit about some options, and if you have an option that we haven't thought of, you know, I guess we'd like to hear that too. But I put in my little, in my memo to you guys, you know, four options that we thought of internally, and one of them was essentially do nothing and try it another year. It's a status quo. Reestablish certain parking restrictions during overnight hours. Move to something that has an odd-even arrangement, where people park on one side of the road on certain days and the other side on other days. And then a fourth one, which could run concurrent with the other three, and that is creation of a snow emergency ordinance that would allow at least the mayor or the city manager to get cars off the streets, you know, during snow emergencies, so we can clear the streets during those particular times. But we really want to hear from you guys. You guys dealt with the no parking 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. a lot longer than I did, which was not at all.
Does it be, do you have a recommendation?
Hold on. So, go ahead, Mr. Turquus. Commissioner, you're asking Mr. Mohammed?
Do you have a recommendation that, it's been two years since we've allowed them to continue to park? And I think if, well, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I mean, our recommendation is some means, and I think the manager touched on it, if, we'd like to hear from you. We kind of rack our brains to come up with ideas or suggestions of how we can accommodate the operation of snow plowing and yet be cordial in accommodating to the residents here. If it's from an operations standpoint, if you, we don't want anybody parking on the streets, but that's, we know that that is not a practical approach or options, if you will. So, I guess I would delay if you would allow me to just keep my thoughts to myself until we hear some of the comments that you guys might have.
Before I go further, I just want to revisit briefly how we got to the point of parking on the street. About two winters ago now, back when we had the no parking during the evening hours, we started getting numerous complaints due to the fact that, well, fisticuffs were breaking out, because people were parking on the terraces, but not the terraces in front of their own houses, but somebody else's terrace, and doing stuff like breaking the underground, sprinkling and whatnot. And some of these individuals had access to a parking pad, even though it was behind their house. And we've been, as we possibly can, plowing the alleys, but people weren't shoveling out their own driveways. And you would see this throughout the town, people not shoveling their own driveways and just going up on the terrace or making a spot on their front lawn. And for whatever reason, that winter, things just got kind of weird. Way back when, when it first started out, it was no parking on the streets, park on your parking pad. But if you had no parking pad, like some sections of the city, and at one time, right up by me, Lakeshore Drive, you had some houses, you were allowed to park on your terrace. But through the years, suddenly everybody was parking on their terrace even if they had a parking pad. And then we ran into some of these situations where people were getting really nasty with their neighbors and, you know, ripping stuff up, including, you know, causing, literally causing mudslides down some streets and clogging drains, et cetera. But that's just a little background. But of course, with every...
Well, don't forget the big piece. We had the ban on on-street parking from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. only, because that's when the streets were plowed.
Right.
And not too long after I got started as a city commissioner, we had to change that because we couldn't afford the overtime. So, all those things you were talking about were happening, but people were legally parking on the street when we were plowing. And so, all those bad things were happening, and it wasn't actually accommodating the intent, which was to make room for the plows to get through and clear the streets. So, that's why that particular process failed.
And again, for each problem we address, another one occurs, especially when you get arctic vortexes, and we end up with absolutely no thaw for an entire winter, and there we are, so. But that's just part of the backstretch round. Commissioner?
A lot of citizens I've talked to, and they wonder, why did we get rid of the 6:00 to 2:00 parking? I mean, the 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. parking. They thought that worked pretty well. I thought it worked pretty well myself. I mean, you had officers that went around at nighttime, they wrote the tickets after 2:00 o'clock. Command made sure that they wrote tickets, people that was parked on the road after 2:00 I guess, you know, we had overtime money, and the plows went through when they cleaned out the roads. Right now, people are complaining, especially last year, it was because they couldn't get through. A lot of neighborhoods only had one lane to go through, and that's because there's cars parked on the street. I can understand that, you know, there were some communities that, you know, complained because of the terrace was being tore up, they didn't like that, you know, which is understandable. But we got to take some good with the bad, because I don't think we're going to come up with a perfect solution to the problem. So, I feel that the 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. parking was pretty good.
So, you'd like to see it returned to the on-street ban?
Why wouldn't we do it from the time when they're actually plowing?
By the...
Well, they don't plow at 2:00. I mean, the time that they start, I don't, it seems like the time that people, the generalists are plowing is 5:00, 5:30 to, you know, 11:00 a.m. in the morning.
Well, it depends. We do have a third shift, and we assign a third shift. But to prohibit on-street parking during snow operation, normal snow operation or snow plowing operation would just about be, I think, not only affect the businesses, if you will, because you got, you know, you're going to prohibit them to, from parking between 7:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, and that's probably not, it's going to be received that well, if you will, with the public and most people. If I may just, a couple of things, if I may go back to, if I'm allowed to. With the mud issue, I think we have, we thought about something that might help, and I'm just sharing with you what we think might help, is if we were to, instead of going to the November restriction, which had taken place in the past through March or April, if you will, I think it was like November 15th through April 15th or so, if we were to reduce that span, I think we can eliminate some of those problems. What I mean by that is if we go from December 15th through the end of February, I think we can catch a lot of, or eliminate a lot of those complaints where, you know, chances are very slim that you're going to get exposed terraces, if you will. So, that's a solution there. And going back to why it started, yes, we don't plow, we don't have dedicated crews, if you will, that goes out of their third shift, but it helped us in, very few people took the chance in parking their cars out there, if you will, on the street, realizing that they have to get them off the street by 2:00 a.m.
Sure.
So, they took the easy way out and parked it off-street, which allowed us to have the street without them going in there and parking on the street. It wasn't itself, I mean, the restriction itself did not probably force people to stay off the street, but an indirect result of the 2:00 to 6:00 is what helped us. And that's really what has worked really well over the years, yes. The year before last, I think, was the exception to what we have had in the past, where we didn't have much snow to speak of, and it was just about 70 degrees almost the entire winter last year.
And people were still on the terraces, there was no snow on the street.
Right.
But here's a question. Even in compressing the weeks, now we have a beefed-up, and I think more bona fide, no parking on the terrace, you know, ordinance. And so, how do I get my head, you know, around, you know, that? Do we continue? And the bottom line is, what I take issue with, there's individuals that do have parking pads, and they don't maintain them to get their cars off the road, and they take the easier route and just, you know, plow through a snow hill, you know, on the terrace. Any, yes?
If you don't know, I see Mr. Spataro.
But you had an observation on...
I can address that if you would.
Please, please.
What I think, I think it goes hand in hand, we have to do multiple things in order for us to satisfy the most concerns we might have. By reducing the number of months, reducing the number of months in restrictions, I think we can address the mud issue to some extent. It goes hand in hand also with the establishment of what Chief Lewis has been suggesting for a while, which I think is a valid point in conjunction with that December 15th through the end of February, along with an emergency... along with an emergency, emergency declaration. And, um, lost my turn of thought. Thanks, Jess. Sorry. I, I lost it.
Okay. Well, while you try to regain it, Vice Mayor.
Well, you know, I, I think we all reached the point where we did with getting rid of the, the old off-street restrictions, because they weren't working. And I don't really wanna see us go back. I think there's other options, I think there's some other options that were put before. So the first thing is, I think do nothing is not an option. So I'm not in favor of that. And, and the reason I say that is partly based on my own block, my own personal experience and my neighbors. And there's a couple of things I noticed. One, what, we did have snow well past mid-March. And where are you gonna put the snow? Clearing a space on your terrace when you have in less than 100 inches of snow is one thing. When you're up around 140 with no thaws, like we did last winter, it still would have been very problematic, where do you put the car on the terrace? Because you can't have the car and the snow at the same time. It also doesn't address all the damage to the curbs that have been done over the years by people driving over them. I mean, you go into the older parts of town and the curbs are all just shattered. And a lot of that has to do with people going, popping the curb to park in the winter. I mean, I've just, on my street, I've seen where people do that routinely, you see the curbs continue to break down. The houses where that's not done, you don't see the kind, that kind of damage to the curbs. So I, I mean, I think there's a little bit more to it than mud or aesthetics. So the other thing that I noticed is that a lot of the problem wasn't the people getting up and going to work. It's the fact that, and then, you know, the plow drivers will tell you, that car's got a foot of snow on it and it's parked in the parking lane. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but year-round, what is the maximum residential area, 48 hours? So one of the things we could do to help ourselves out is start enforcing, that car's been there and has not moved for more than 48 hours. The foot of snow on top of it tells that it hasn't moved in more than 48 hours. So that would help a lot. And so that brings me to, out of these options that were presented to us, I, I, I kinda liked the, the snow emergency, then I realized, how do we get the penetration rates? I mean, how, how do you really get the word out effectively to everybody in a timely way? My experience is when you're trying to communicate and you come up with everything you can think of, you still seem to miss about 75% of the people. So something that's regular, that it's standard, everything's done the same way, you develop a routine, I think you have more likelihood of success. And that, I know it's not without its warts, but that kinda leads me to the odd even. Other communities in West Michigan that deal with snow like we do have used it with different amounts of success. But I, I think that would be worth giving it a try, rather than going back and finding out, oh yeah, all right, that wouldn't have really helped in a year like last year anyway. Or, you know, thinking we're gonna be able to successfully tell everybody, hey, you need to get your car off the street tonight and we're gonna hit enough people that it's actually gonna be effective. So that's kinda where I am, I guess.
Chief, you have some input on the snow emergency?
Yeah, at least I have one piece of that, so that's clear. I sent a piece to you and the manager today about the snow emergency declaration. And I don't wanna confuse that with the other three options we have. And the one I sent you was, was an example on the east side of the state where like 30 communities were listed. And almost in all those ordinances, there was a method notification. And when the news came on, social media, so on and so forth, they were using these snow emergency declarations. But that isn't what they'd use for a normal snowfall. That was only if we have a winter like last year where we get into a situation, we are really hammered and we've got streets that are completely impassable like last year. Because I'll tell you what, besides for regular vehicular traffic, no one's mentioned the problems that we had in public safety. Fire trucks could not even penetrate the streets, we walked to certain houses, police cars were being stuck left and right, thank God we've gone to the SUVs now to help us out a bit and also Moe allowed us to borrow four-wheel drives.
Trash pickup was a big problem.
That's right. So the smoke, the snow emergency declaration would only be declared maybe once every 10 years, but would be an additional tool to where if we got like a 40-inch snowstorm or whatever, we had a problem, he reports to the manager, hey, we have a crisis here, we would go into it. And it's not gonna be like, we're gonna decide at 4:00 o'clock today and we're gonna do it tonight. This would be where we maybe decide on Friday and the next Tuesday, we're going to go into snow emergency to where we start clearing sections of the city. And I'm, I'm sure there'd be some people that went out here, but generally if they got used to this or knew about this, in addition to our other plan, that in an emergency, a true emergency situation, we can declare and they're gonna, would help clear the streets for pedestrian, for vehicular traffic, but also to allow public safety to function during these, these true emergencies.
Okay, so that's, that's... So this would be in addition to not in and of itself.
No, we can't be declaring five emergencies every winter just to plow the streets. That, that would never work.
That makes more sense.
Commissioner.
Last year, I think Grand Rapids dealt with this and they took a more proactive approach because I think that there was numerous articles. I think their strategy involved, you know, telling people that they had to move their cars for, at certain times when it got to be a certain point. And I'm wondering if that's another alternative. So basically, I think they said, you know, it's gotten so bad in the neighborhoods and they, they divided the city into quadrants or something like that. And they said, you know, in this day, you gotta switch sides of the street or there's gonna be no street parking. And it gave the time, the crews time to clear almost on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis. Now, that was something I think that they kind of developed with on the fly because they were, like us, dealing with a very bad winter and a bad situation. But it might be something that doesn't require, it only needs to be used when the situation actually necessitates it. So it's another option.
Another option. Yeah, what they actually had experienced last year was non-compliance on the even odds. And some neighborhoods were so badly snowed in because people ignored. I mean, there was multiple tow trucks coming in from all over the place, you know, hauling stuff out because it was untenable. It had, it actually had deteriorated. The system broke down last year.
Well, for everybody, no matter what.
Right, right, so... But it's a... Mr. Alshutell?
Just to touch base, I remembered what I was talking about. It's exactly the, the on-terrace parking lot, you know, the combination would have to be the emergency declaration and going back to, you know, whatever time we decide, if we decide, and the time. But alongside with that, we would have to suspend whatever the ordinance called for prohibiting the, on, the parking on the terraces, if we decide to go that route. Going back to the even odd, and I've, I've done some investigation on that with us, with our system at the city of Muskegon. And I listed here at least 13 major streets that have no on-street parking on one side. You know, Montgomery, McCracken, Southern, Creston, Irwin, Wood, Sanford, north of Southern, Marquette, Gettysburg Seaway, Lake Shore Drive, Division, Beidler, Palmer, Davis. Those are major streets. What North, what Grand Rabbit does, if I understood them correctly, is that the vertical signs supersede whatever rules, the odd and even. So if you decide, let's say on McCracken, that you're, that it's, I believe it's the even side, it's the even side that has the parking on it. Let's say for discussion purposes, that the even side is the one that has on-street parking allowed on it right now. So if you go to the odd, on the odd days, those guys have no place to park. They cannot just go to the other side and park on-street, where you have no parking signs. Those no-park signs will supersede the odd even, so you can, you're not allowed...
Mr. Mayor? Vice Mayor?
I was gonna say, well then, that really isn't a practical option for us because there are far more residential streets in Muskegon that only have parking on one side than have parking on two. But the problem stems from where the cars are parked. The actual traffic lanes were fine until later in the winter. And again, a lot of it was, you know, slow plows don't wanna hit a car. And I, I know on my, you know, my block, the stretch I drive on a regular basis, you know, there were a couple of cars that pretty much didn't move, but maybe once all winter. And that's, you know, that was a source of a lot of the problem. And, you know, we have ordinances about vehicles that are, you know, basically being stored. And in the winter, we gotta be particularly vigilant about that. And, you know, so, but yeah, I mean, if, if you, if you can't use the odd even for parking on one side of the street, that pretty much eliminates three-quarters of the city. So I mean, we'd have to come up with something else.
Commissioner.
When you were talking about the vehicles that were left out, never moved, was that when we had the 6:00 to, I mean, the 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. parking? Or was that just recently?
That was last winter.
Last one?
I'm talking about last winter, because it became pretty obvious that the places that were creating the choke points, I live on 6th Street, so I'll, I'll talk about 6th Street. The, the biggest choke points were created by cars that had a foot of snow on them and obviously had not moved for weeks at a time. And that everybody else was kinda going to work and coming back. But I don't know why some of those cars, I mean, maybe they just had an extra car and it wasn't being used. Maybe, you know, it was one of their kids and their kids was off at school and left the car. I don't know. But it, it, yeah, I mean, when, when you have snow telling you that that car hadn't been moved because it's covered in snow that's getting old, we, we have to address that as a problem. And just saying you can park that, you know, car that's not moving on the terrace all winter isn't really doing anybody any favors either. I mean, you know, now we're doing public damage to the curbs, the public terraces and all of that.
Well, if it's, excuse me, Vice Mayor. But if it's parked there and it's not moving, it's not doing any damage to the curb. It might be doing damage to the terrace, curb.
I, I, I wouldn't disagree with you on that. What was frustrating to me is I know in a couple of cases, those were cars that could have been stored at the back end of driveways and were.
Where, where, where are we moving? You know, then it's a...
Kathy had a comment?
Kathy had a comment.
Oh.
Ms. Mohammed didn't bring this up. I need to express myself, thank you. Just something to keep in mind and that there possibly it would be doable under whatever scenario, but Commissioner Enzima Sebenga can probably understand this better than most of us. But I'm concerned about our downtown area. And when we went to this recent procedure where people can park all night, it's really helped the downtown. And we used to get calls continuously from places like the Amazon. And it's gonna happen even more now because we're, we're being urged to require less parking for, with residences coming downtown. You know, maybe you only have one, which really was what the Amazon building has, is one parking space per apartment. And we know very well that there's usually more than one car per apartment. Those people need a place to stay, particularly, particularly during the night or having guests come. And once we could allow them to park on the street during the, the night, that really helps us out. For, you know, usually they're going away to work or school or whatever during the day, but they need that parking during the night. So whether that's, we treat the downtown differently, whether we do the odd even, as much as I don't like that, I, I prefer that in terms of at least allowing some parking all night. But I would urge you to keep that situation in mind for the downtown area. And, and I expect it's going to, that need is going to increase, not decrease, as we get more residences in the downtown area.
Well, thanks for throwing another...
Thank you.
Yeah, if I, if I could, no. It seems like the, obviously, the least confusing is the 2:00 to 6:00. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. There are, while I do agree with Kathy, we might need to look at the downtown and see what we can do, especially as more residential comes in the downtown. The least confusing would either be do nothing or do the 2:00 to 6:00. The, the even odd has potential to be confusing. Even Mohammed called, Grand Rapids understands a little bit about what they do, but it's really not even odd, you know, it starts at like midnight, midnight it goes to 6:00 p.m. or something like that. So there could be times where people say, well, when I went to bed, it was an even day. And now here I am, I woke up in the morning, it's an odd day and I get, you know, I've got a ticket. And it just seems potentially, you know, like that'll take quite a bit of getting used to. And that's kinda why we talked about, what if we really condensed it to middle of December, to middle of February, or end of, end of February and got the really bad part of the winter, knowing that, yeah, sometimes it's gonna have bad snowstorms in, in October or, you know, or November, or bad snowstorms in April even. But catch the, the big bulk of the winter, deal with that part of time and then let off-street parking resume during those other times and just kinda deal with the sporadic snowstorms that pop up. Those ones aren't the issue, the issues are the ones where snow is beating us up and beating us up, beating us up and we just can't get to those, those driving lanes. Hopefully, we don't have that problem many, many times in March. We'll have it once in a while and we'll deal with it, maybe with a snow emergency declaration like the chief wants to be able to do. But the bulk of the snow and the problem's gonna come late December through February. And maybe we should just focus our efforts on that. And even if we, if we did warnings only in the month of December to get people's, you know, understanding of it and then really did heavy, heavy enforcement in the, the really high snow periods, January, February. It just seems like that makes the most sense, understanding that at some point, even if it's not today, we need to go back and reevaluate the downtown and understand how we make sure that there's plenty of places for people to park, because we do want more people living down there than we have now. And maybe that's more off-street parking or a different level of enforcement. But we definitely need to have an opportunity to clear those spaces because I did know, we, we did receive calls from people, you know, including down by Edward Jones where they were, it was just, they couldn't, they had a lot of parking spaces available to them, but they just couldn't park in them, because it was, they just couldn't, we couldn't plow most of the winter.
Right. I, I would be, you know, willing, and, and again, I'm speaking about trying to address in some way this winter, given what we experienced last winter. And I, I could, you know, except trying, again, the, a compressed period of, you know, the parking ban. And it would give us time from this winter to next to begin addressing the realities of different sections of the city. And then, you know, Moe and Kathy can throw down over, over, or that, or that stuff. But I also like looking at that additional tool of, you know, the, the snow emergency, you know, declaration. And if we know it's coming, it's barreling in, it just gives us, you know, an added tool. And again, you said it'd probably be used very sparingly.
You know, plus we're on the back end of something and we found out how bad off we are. Last year, the streets were impassable. It'd be nice just to like call a timeout, give it residence and say, hey, listen, like the quadrant, we need to start getting these quadrants and getting these streets. Because by, by the end of February, March, there are streets that were impassable.
But, but again, I still have the question then, how do we, how are we interpreting our no parking on the lawn and terrace ban?
Are we able to, I mean, do terrace parking by, almost by permit? Where they would have to demonstrate that they don't have parking space for at least two vehicles or something along those lines? Especially so they're not parking in Derek's terrace? You know, he plows out his driveway so they can plant, so they can get up on his terrace? Because I think that could be a potential concern. And I wasn't here before, but I would hate to constantly have the neighbor parking on my terrace because it's easier to get to.
Because once upon a time, people were courteous enough only to park if they didn't have a parking pad and everybody else was cleaning.
Oh, sorry, Dan.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking about this and it just seems like a lot of effort to try to get people to get off the street from 2:00 to 6:00 when the basic problem is the people who don't move their cars for a long period of time. So if we're setting up some period of time, we're, we're get, we're forcing people into a lot of bad situations with terrace parking where we have potential for conflicts. I mean, and setting up a system for, that just seems like way too much work for the problem that, that we're really dealing with. And to me, it's the cars that are parked for too long on the streets. If those cars would get out of there, we would have the streets cleared. People park on the streets all year long and it, you know, it's only a problem at this point. I just think that we're, we're making all of the residents and we're, our own staff jump through a lot of hoops and a lot of potential conflict points when the, the root of it... lot of hoops and a lot of potential conflict points, when the root of it is getting those cars off the street so we can clear them.
And I understand that point, too, what you're saying, but there is something to training people to get their car off the street at two, so that it's actually off at six, or seven, or eight, when they're on their way to work. There is an element to, you know, a training, and the chronic behavior problems are a lot more visible. So, I don't know. Commissioner Hood.
I just feel that, um, I got a lot of complaints on the change, and in my area where people wanted to go back to the terrace parking. And the thing with the terrace parking is, okay, it was from two to six, which that could be tweaked, but from two to six, you figure, people that's out visiting other folks, two o'clock is usually the time where, you know, clubs are closing and people are starting to move around and go home. At two o'clock, by two o'clock, they're thinking, okay, we got to get off the street. So they park on the terrace. They're off the streets, and everybody's not going to wake up at six o'clock to say, oh, I can move my car back on the street. Most of them still asleep, or either they're going to work, so it's clear for the trucks to go through and plow. I just felt that, and then the ones that didn't do it, that did park on the street after two o'clock, patrol would come through and give them tickets. And if they've been there for, if it looks like this vehicle hasn't been moved, then they put forty-eight-hour parking sticker on there, come back two days later and check it, and then call for record and get it out of there. So, I don't know, I guess I'm just a believer in the two to six a.m. parking. I thought it worked pretty well.
Yeah, the, you know, reality hits us wrong, because, you know, I was under the impression that when we did have the ban between, you know, two and six, that, you know, we were still only allowing terrace parking in those areas where people didn't have parking pads. But we stopped enforcing.
Yep.
And so everybody and their brother, you know, started parking willy-nilly where, you know, wherever. But, you know, if that answers the question, I don't know, it's, because I was kind of taken aback, you know, at the time, we're really not enforcing, you know, you're parking on your terrace and you're not supposed to, because you got a parking pad, you know.
Well, I never got that memo working. It was just always two a.m. parking, you're off the street at two a.m., and they park on the terrace. There was never anything that I can ever remember that says, this person here can't park on the terrace because they have a driveway. Usually, they're going to drive, they'd rather park in the driveway than to park on the terrace, but if there's no more room, then they're on the terrace. But I'm quite sure there's always some, somebody, somewhere that's going to break the rules.
Right.
And that's with any rule.
But I just have a keen remembrance in the, you know, late eighties and the early nineties, even starting out in neighborhood association, that that was always the major implication, that the only people on the terraces were people on Lake Shore Drive that didn't have a parking pad, but...
The late eighties and early nineties, yeah, I can still remember them, I was working them.
Yeah. Vice Mayor.
Well, you know, I think we've gone around on this, but, you know, I just think that based on what I've heard so far, I mean, first of all, I mean, we had an extraordinary winter last year, not because, just because of the amount of snow, we didn't set any records with the total amount of snow, but we never had any melts. Even in seventy-seven, seventy-eight, we had some mid-winter thaws that helped clear the terraces down a little bit. So I don't know that, I mean, we look back fondly at something that worked, but, you know, we had a string there of pretty easy winters. So was it working, or was it just, it wasn't a big issue? And if we'd had a winter like we had this past winter, we would have thought, oh, this isn't working, we need to do something differently. So I think the real thing is we need to find a solution that is something that can be implemented. And, you know, I, to be honest with you, the more I heard the chief talk about the snow emergency and notifying people, we got to clear the streets so we could do a quadrant at a time, that seems to be much more practical, because you're not, in the sense that, you know, we did some suspensions of the old parking rules in the past, because there was no snow, and it's like, why are we doing this? There's no snow out there. On the other hand, when you have heavy snow, it would have been nice to have something in place where you can say, look, everybody on Sixth Street needs to move their car by such and such a time, and we're going to clean the entire length of Sixth Street, or pick your street where you live. And, you know, that seems to be a practical way, because then you're, you are dealing with the folks who just are the rule breakers, and they're leaving their car out there all the time, under any of the different rules that we've had over the years. And you are dealing with some of the other issues that others have raised. So I hadn't really thought of that as a practical solution when I was reading the material, but having explained, it seems to me that, one, if you can't move one side of the street parking to the other side of the street, then there's no sense even talking about that, because that's too much of the city. And that maybe this is a way to go, and deal with, you know, the fact that when we have a snow like we did last year, we have a mechanism in place to address it. I don't know, I don't know that there's an easy answer, unless we move Muskegon to Florida.
Of course, there's not an easy answer, that's why we're sitting here chewing on this, so, but yeah, it's...
I mean, I think we just don't know how many people don't have parking spaces and park on the street, but my sense of it is that there's a lot of people that are impacted by having to get their cars off the street, and that's a lot of time and effort and potential for conflict, when the chance of it happening is not a hundred percent, and the, it's not even that behavior that's causing the problems, it's, you know, the parking longer than forty-eight hours.
I guess whatever decision you guys decide to make, we just need some, from D W, we just need some time, the streets are free of parking, on-street parking, so we can, you know, whether we go to six o'clock, two o'clock, or we cannot just depend on that emergency declaration by itself, if you will, it has to be in conjunction with something else to get us to freedom of the...
Well, the problem was, in business areas last year, even, I mean, that's a prime example of why I think Commissioner Hood and I are coming at this from opposite directions, because I know a lot of business people, that people started showing up and parking at their businesses after seven o'clock in the morning, and the plows would come by at nine or ten. Well, what are you going to do? I mean, you know, nothing that we've talked about, except possibly saying, no parking on this street for a period of time so we can clear it, on a per need basis, addresses that situation. And if we're going to have a healthy, vibrant downtown that's generating tax increments to pay for snowplows, we need to accommodate the businesses.
Mr. Al Shetel.
I'm not suggesting the downtown, I guess, the downtown is one portion of the, we have a hundred eighty miles of roadways. Downtown is only like two or three miles, and I hate to get into a debate between the downtown. We're not, we're not creating anything, or we're not proposing anything, D W and these, to harm the downtown. We benefit from a successful downtown, too, but I think we have a hundred eighty miles of roadways that we also have to keep in, to keep in mind, if you will. And that, the problem that Mr. Hood is talking about is, that I have, in the twenty-three years that I've been with the city, the last fifteen of which, D W just about, I do not recall ever hearing as many complaints as we heard about last year's orders.
Because that was a heavy snowfall in that entire period of time.
That's true, but I, that's, we've had heavy snowfalls in the past, when we had six to two parking, I mean, two to six parking. And even during the heavy snowfalls, it was still, I thought, more successful than what we, than after we changed it. Because during the heavy snowfalls, they were out, plowed, they went through, and they'd go through more than just once, you know, because if it keeps snowing, they come back through, so they may be widely come back through at eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the morning, you know. But I just wanted to say that during, we've had heavy snowfalls, and during the two to six a.m. parking, and it still worked out.
I would suggest what we need to look at, I know that a lot of the change came about because of the terrace issue and curbs and stuff like that. But if we're really looking at, the new issue that came about was snowed in streets and the like, I think there's some value in going back and trying a compressed period with the two to six ban, along with the added implementation of, you know, the potential for the snow emergency, because then we can really get that information out, you got to get off, you got to get off, you got to get off. Because answering one question opened up a whole new problem, because of, you know, what we got last year as far as snow. And we really are looking at, what is the intent of our operation in the winter time? It's to clear that, it's to clear that, that snow, and we may have to live with some of the other unforeseen issues that brings up, but Chief, please.
And Mayor Wurston, we discussed the snow emergency declaration, is that it's a more official way for either the manager or the mayor to make it more of a declaration and more, you know, like, public, and we need this done, because we could have, last year, staff could have done a temporary traffic control order, and we could have just given people like two-day notice or come to their streets. Staff could have did that without even asking the commissioner. We felt, I just feel that was proper, because really something of that importance should come from the government body, and that's why the snow declarations are in place, so that the top, you know, government officials or the manager or the mayor can put that declaration out there. Because we could accomplish, a smaller test, traffic control orders, temporary, but it just, it would be unofficial, how do you get the word out, it would be in small sections. That's why that would help, whatever question comes up on our regular snow removal, that would be a nice addition, where if we got jammed up and mayor made a declaration of snow mercy, what we're hoping for is a hundred percent compliance, and generally citizens will look outside, they'll see fifteen, eighteen, twenty inches of snow, they'll realize it emergency state, that the neighbors calling for, and it was off the street, people can go to security measures to get their car, get their neighbors yard, or, you know, bacon line or something, just, we're not going to be picky, just get off the streets so we can, we can get that, that street cleaned up. And when those plows go by, obviously, the citizens will see those streets are clear, even if we're under, you know, emergency, the cars can go back, retreat back in the street, because they'll see it's clear. There's a lot of things that can be communicated without being said, that they'll go right back to those curbs, once they see it's clean, because we're on other things, we're in emergency state, we're not out there nitpicking traffic, hey, get off the streets, we plow, come right back.
Mr. Al Shetel.
I think what we're, as Mr. Paul, when the chief said, what we gotta remember too is, if people are not aware that they need to get off the street, and you allow the situation of the snow to develop on the terraces, all the front yards, whatever options that might be available to residents, that by the time you get around to issuing that emergency declaration, if you will, or prohibition, or on-street parking, it might be too late, and if you recall, I got myself in trouble with the same exact issue with the garbage last year, by saying, we need to get the garbage doors off of Muskegon and Webster, when we have five foot of snow in here, when everyone is questioning, where do you want me to go with that? And I think that's what we need to keep in mind as well.
We need to move snow, we need to get people off the street. We, I think a combination of a constricted period, as Mr. Al Shetel suggested, along with the snow emergency, you know, may be a good exercise, as we look forward to, you know, the realities of our very old city with all of its development. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I think we're coalescing around what some of the possibilities that we don't want, including we don't want the status quo, we don't want even odd parking, which, to me, at first blush seemed appealing, but given the number of streets in our city that's only parking on one side, mine included, and because of so many intersections that are only on one side of the street, you couldn't even move the traffic over to the other side of Montgomery, it's just, it's undoable, not to mention some other inefficiencies with that approach. Returning to the two to six a.m. ban is certainly a possibility, and I like the idea of the compressed period to your heaviest winter months, I like the idea of the permitting to demonstrate that you have no parking otherwise, and so you can be permitted to park on your terrace. I like the snow emergency season, which would be done in concert with the two to six a.m. ban. The key thing for me, though, if we were to do, go back to the two to six a.m. parking ban during winter months, is can we get snow plowing at all during that time period? Because it seems ironic that we're going to have a ban on parking but not do any snow plowing, and I know one of the concerns was overtime costs. Your third shifters now, they're paid at a normal scale rate, correct? Most of them are not working overtime on those third shifts, and either way, can we get third shift workers who'll be paid at a normal rate, or maybe a slight, you know, premium for third shifting, but not overtime? Can we make it so that we have actual plowing happening during the two to six a.m. ban? As Commissioner Hood indicated, and I think Mohammed earlier, one of the benefits of the two to six a.m. ban is also that people are, continue to be off the road at seven a.m., eight a.m., because people that parked, you know, got the car off at two are not going to be rushing to put their car back on the street at six a.m., so. But, but yes, we could get plowing between two and six a.m. without harming our budget.
As long as you're not open between the same street. Yes, we will be doing so.
Yeah, we couldn't definitely do them all in a four-hour span, but it would definitely give us opportunities when there's heavy snowfall on those really important, critical times, to hit those streets between two and six, when we need to, for sure.
Vice Mayor.
Well, you know, I'm open, I'm even open going back to two to six, if that's the consensus of the group. But I just want to caution all of us that, no matter what we do, if we have another winter like we did last year, we're going to get a lot of complaints, and whatever we do decide to do is not going to be perfect. And I'll just use myself as an example. I was parking on the street the last few weeks of the winter, for the simple reason that my driveway is the first driveway south of the intersection with six and southern. And my, so my neighbor doesn't have a driveway on Sixth Street, their driveway is off the Southern Avenue side of their property. And so all of that snow, every time the plow comes through, ends up in my driveway, because that's the first opening, and that's the first release point. And by the end of the winter, not only had I split my shovel in half trying to move snow, even using my ice bud, I still had over three and a half feet of accumulated ice and slush at the end of my driveway that I just could not get through, and I had nowhere to put it. I literally had run out of places on my terrace to put the snow. So when we have a winter like, and that, I've been in my house for twenty-five years, and that's the first time I've ever had either of those things happen. And so when we have extraordinary events like last year, at least based on historic norms, we have to expect that, no matter what we come up with as human beings, we're not going to figure out Mother Nature, and we're just going to have to do the best that we can. And whatever we agree to do, I think we just have to be willing to tell people, when they call and complain, we're doing the best we can, and we'll do the best to get your street taken care of, depending on what their particular... taken care of, depending on what their particular concern or complaint happens to be. Because I think we've heard a lot of variety of things, and, you know, one of the things that's becoming clear to me, particularly hearing from Commissioner Hood, is, you know, maybe it's time to stop looking at the cities on one side, but it's all on these issues. And maybe we need to start looking at having rules for different zones that make sense for that particular zone. I just think that, you know, we just have to understand that we're not gonna come up with a solution that's gonna fix what we dealt with last winter.
I agree. But I think going forward, and the snow's coming, I, I think I still lean towards looking at the compressed period of no parking on the street, along with Chief's recommendation for the emergency. And at the same time, we can continue to look at, Frank and Commissioner Johnson, you know, brought up the potential for, you know, permitting down the road. But I, I think that we need to be careful, and when we're going in, you know, that, that level of scrutiny, we need to really see what we're, we're looking at. And, you know, it gives us this winter, spring, and summer to, you know, potentially craft something, you know, a, a bit better. But I think, you know, we're looking, we're looking at, we gotta get the snow off the road. And that's, that was the real issue last year, as well as the cars, too. I'd, I'd be willing to move in that direction with, with that two-prong approach. That's my two cents.
I guess I've been the strongest against it. I could go for it. Again, I think all the pictures show cars that have been parked there for far too long. But if we think that this is, you know, a more consistent way to keep the streets clear, you know.
And I think it gives us an opportunity to better pinpoint those egregious people before it becomes a really big issue.
Well, in this, when we do the ban, I mean, they, they have to get the car off the street. They're gonna get a ticket every day.
Right.
So they'll get their car off the street. So, you know, we're, we're, we're testing a different behavior. You know, we, we've tested the behavior the last two years with, you know, and we see the results. I mean, so I, I'm, I think it's, you know, a compressed ban might be a good...
And we got more winters to come. We can try all kinds of wonderful things. We got, we got all kinds of winters to come.
I do think it's, changing is confusing to the public, though. And, you know, I think at some point, you know, it's frustrating to, to change the system. I think that the, the two to six ban was in place for a long time, and now we went away for it. I think at this point, it's gonna be confusing to people, because time is short, but I think it's possible to communicate with them. So, but I would, you know, caution that hopefully we don't yo-yo on this based on the previous year's snowfall. Because that's, I think, the typical response is to say, well, it didn't snow that bad last year, let's get rid of this two to six ban. That works for one year, maybe two, but then, you know, we, we need something that is consistent over time, so we're not constantly, the worst thing we can do is look backwards, because that's probably the worst predictor of what we're gonna face this year.
Point, point, point taken. Point taken, and I wouldn't wanna do that. But I would posit that when it came to people and their perceptions and their opinions of the, go ahead and park on the street, the majority of people, say, one or two, especially on narrow streets, what, were you crazy? You know, and above, you know, allowing the, the on-street parking. I, I got more pushback on that than, than kudos for, for allowing it. But that's anecdotal.
Yeah. And I, like I said, I'm a person who, we don't have a parking pad, so we park on the street. And it was much better, the situation, parking on the street.
I'll give you a permit with my signature on it.
I think that there's quite a few people who park on the street all year round, and would prefer to just do that again, and they move their cars every day. So that, that's not the problem. But I'm not sure what, you know.
Okay. Where are we moving and how? Nice Mayor.
Well, I think we ought to understand how the two to six ban works. So we do have a little bit of a window here. I would suggest that perhaps we have both a proposed timeframe for that, as far as, I mean, because it used to be November fifteenth to April fifteenth, which made sense after seventy-seven and seventy-eight, and those winters. But, you know, we hadn't had snow in the end of March for well over a decade. So maybe looking back at, you know, what, what's more typical. And then the other thing would be, I'd, I'd be curious to see more detail on how the, the snow emergency and the temporary notice stuff would work. Is that something that's really doable, or is that sounding good? But if we had to implement it, you know, too many people are getting left behind. Because anything we have to do, people have to know what's expected, and that they have the ability to comply. So I, I'd kinda like to see that, and then maybe we can make it, you know, we have a, another meeting, are we gonna meet at the end of the month?
Yes.
And then the work session in, in December. So I think between those two meetings, maybe we could get that information out, and then we could maybe reach some consensus.
I think we probably need it no later than the next meeting.
I would agree with that.
You thinking we might have a snow emergency meeting?
Absolutely. And, and I'm just itching to, to declare one. Okay, so at the second meeting of this month, a two-pronger will come back on...
We'll bring it here.
With, and then, see how that works? Okay. Is there any other business?
One item. I didn't realize we spent so much on those two. But this is short and it's good.
Okay.
Many of us in the city tend to forget that there is a small, small portion, the Reese Puffer Public School District, and citizens who send their children to that school, living in the city of Muskegon. And their high school marching band recently won their division at the state band competition level. It's the equivalent of winning the state championship, if you're a football team. And they're going on to a national competition. And so I just wanna give them a shout out as a, as a Rocket alumnus, and as our fellow citizens, support their kids. And perhaps we could send something to them when their season's complete. So, good things.
Very good thing. Very good thing. Anything else, gentlemen? If not, I do want to express what a pleasure it was to meet our Big Reds. I made a few stops at a number of the precincts and said hello to the, to the men last Tuesday. And, yeah, it, it was, it was just a delight. It was just a delight. And continue to express our, our, our support for the team and the good work they've done this year, and the good work that they provided for the citizens during the elections. Also, last week, I got a call from station, AM nine, I forget. Anyway, Detroit CBS affiliate gave a call and said, hey, Wall Street Journal said that Muskegon is one of the top five comeback cities in the United States. So was able to give a brief interview that would play out to, I think, 15, 20 of their affiliates throughout the state of Michigan. So kudos to the private and the public sector and all their hard work for revitalizing our, our metro area. And we're getting national, as well as regional acknowledgement for that. And the article also made it into National Real Estate Journal. So we got people buying condos in Florida that maybe will get condos up here. Oh, yeah, right. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, that wasn't the Wall Street Journal, but 24/7 Wall Street.
Yes.
Right? Okay. I thought that had something to do with it. But anyway, I also met with my fellow urban mayors last Thursday in Lansing. So if anybody is apt to wanna get on the horn tomorrow, get on the horn tomorrow with all of our contingent in Lansing, our two House reps, and the Senator, and tell them to work diligently in the lame duck towards a transportation bill. And it could move as soon as Thursday. So it's imperative that we, we tell them that we're watching. Even if they're not returning, they still have, you know, the power of the vote in their, in their chambers. So that, that's, that's very key. So I can't think of anything else, but I'll, I'll probably write something up and, you know, send it out to you, gentlemen. Anything else? Oh, Veterans Day tomorrow. There's, at 11 o'clock, there will be a ceremony at the Veterans Memorial Park on the Causeway. Beginning at 11, you can park at B.C. Cobb, take a trolley out to the new section on the north side that's under construction. It's a celebration of our veterans and our heroes, as well as the public funding of the restoration of Michigan's Most Beautiful Mile. That'll be filed. We also have a program at Community College at...
One.
One, yeah, one o'clock in Collegiate.
I think it's outside and in Collegiate Hall.
In Collegiate Hall. So we have the opportunity to honor our, our men and women. Please do so. I can't think if there was anything else. There probably is, because there's always something else. But we have to pause for the cause for this, and then you got a meeting, don't you?
It'll be quick.
It'll be quick.
Yes.
So Commissioner Hood, if you would like to ease us out of the commission meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Hood and seconded by the remainder of the commission to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to call the November 10 Community Relations Committee meeting to order. We have...